We'll be asking the questions tonight. We want to really thank you for taking the time on an August night to show up. Because who you vote for on September ninth for that, for those four at-large city councils is extremely important unless you want Frank Baker on, you better make sure that your vote comes. You know who Frank Baker is, you've seen him before, and he does not, should not be back on the council and bring us back to the years before we moved the city in a strong progressive way. So JP Progressives has already endorsed three incumbents, Lucie Louiejean, Julia Mahia, and Henry Santana. So we thought it would be important tonight for you to hear from the two other candidates that had filled out the Progressive Mass questionnaire, so therefore they qualify to be considered for endorsement by JP Progressives. If there is time, and I hope there will be at the end, we'll take questions from the audience. You should have written your question out and given it to Krista, co-chair of JP Progressives, and she will make sure that it's not a repeat question. And as so often happens at these things, that it is really a question and not someone's thesis. So, so these questions tonight are based on how the candidates responded to the Progressive Mass questionnaire. And so we want to make sure that tonight each candidate gets to talk about what distinguishes them from each other. And there will be two questions that are unique to each candidate, and we're going to use the same format we used at the mayoral community conversations organized around three themes: leadership vision for the city, management of the city, defender of our civil rights and Boston values given the national pressures. We also, and as I said, we're going to try to make sure that there are time for audience questions. So each question, each candidate now is going to have time for a two-minute opening statement, and we're going to start with Marvin.
Okay. So can I stand up?
You can, you can stand up, you can kneel down, you can twist and shout, whatever you comfortable.
I think it was at the party. Hello, how you all doing? My name is Marvin Mathelier. I'm running for candidate for Boston City Council at-large. You've probably already heard this, but this is the truth. I have no affiliation with City Hall, I'm not an appointee or an elected official and employee of City Hall. I kind of consider myself as an outsider, but that's okay, because the things that I am, I'm a, I'm a father of three lovely, rambunctious kids, an eight-year-old, four-year-old, a year, a year-old. I'm a co-owner of Ula Cafe down in, on Amary Street. I'm assuming some of you have been there. I am a United States Marine officer, been in reserves for sixteen years, I'm a lieutenant colonel, and I'm a proud son of Haitian immigrants. Now, all those things that I said there resonates with a lot of people in Boston, right? We've got our immigrants, we have our parents, we have our veterans, right? And I feel that my story will resonate with people in Jamaica Plain as well as Boston. But some of the things that I could bring to bear when it comes to City Hall, at the international level, I've, I've worked in different countries. I'm a combat veteran, I've been to Afghanistan, but not only that, I've also worked in humanitarian assistance, disaster relief missions in Guatemala, Guyana, Haiti, and whatnot. And I've worked with a lot of people who may not like me because of the uniform I'm wearing or the country that I'm representing, but we were able to work together to make sure that we're committed to mission because we understand that people came first. Those are the things I could bring to City Hall. I want to make sure that we're able to collaborate with our people in City Hall so we can focus on the mission, and that to our residents here in Boston. I also worked at Massachusetts Veteran Services, where I was a deputy chief engagement officer, and I was in charge of constituent services. And all in all, as a constituent service, we focused on making sure that we were reaching out to the constituents that needed support as much as possible, and we did that. We were able to, that's two minutes?
Yeah, so please keep your eye on Sharon, and she is going to tell you when to stop.
Thank you, please go for me.
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds.
I'll throw that.
I will try. Well, good evening, buenas noches, and to everyone who's also watching online, I should have that slide. My name is Alexandra Valdez, and I am proudly running to be your next city councilor at large. From serving as your neighborhood JP rep, to being able to serve a citywide Latina liaison, to now being able to say that I'm the executive director of the Office of Culture Affairs for the City of Boston, and also running to be your next councillor. JP has been home to me and my family since I came to the United States about ten, when I was ten years old. I wasn't born in this country. Boston opened its arms and really said welcome, and took us in in order to make Boston home. I live in Hyde Park with my beautiful three-year-old and my partner, and we both want to make sure that we are creating a Bostonness for everyone. Being able to work in a city that's truly represented and focusing on affordable housing, universal pre-K, and basic city services are a lot of my priorities. But one of the things that I have learned in serving for the city is being able that learning and listening is the key to understanding what every single city resident needs in order to prosper. From affordable housing, to cleaner streets, to making sure that we're creating policies and programs that are for the people. Policy without people-centered doesn't mean that we're creating solutions. And that's a lot of the work that I'm proud to say that I've been able to build. From childcare providers to creating grants, to now being able to say that in the baby office that I work, we have been able to help over seventy nonprofit organizations to create programming in our city. And that's just some of the small work that we've been able to do, and also when it comes to focusing on gender equity work. Policy and gender equity and education is at the top of my presentation, but also when it comes to focusing and serving all of you. I want to be able to serve and continue my work as your next city councillor by bringing in experience, bringing in passion, and bringing in that love that truly looks like and what representative really means in the City of Boston, and also for someone who is deeply rooted in what JP looks like. Thank you.
So we're going to ask everybody to hold your pause to the end so we can get to all our questions. Thank you.
All right, so the first question is about the leadership vision for the city. So if you were elected, what would be the context of your maiden speech, and what would be your first two hearing orders? Is this the order? All right, so Marvin first.
Yeah, absolutely. So, once elected, I think my maiden speech will really focus on a term of hope and collaboration, and really looking at the policies that's being impacted in our city today. I didn't get a chance to say this, but one of the things I want to focus on is looking, how do we go and combat housing affordability? So talk about housing affordability and being a champion of rent stabilization, which I want to be able to support and help our state electives pass through would be part of my maiden speech. Making sure that people are able to live here comfortably, knowing that when that lease is up, that they don't have to be worried about getting kicked out. I want to ensure that our children in Boston public schools are getting a great quality education, and ensuring that we have ways to do that by partnering with higher education, making sure that we're looking at STEM programs that could be included in our, in our, in our high schools, along with other public schools within BPS. And then, of course, looking at vocational programs. So all in all, my maiden speech is going to be a point about hope, but also going at the tactical levels of how we're going to approach housing affordability, Boston public schools, along with public safety, which is something that's truly important to me, and I, and I step in in three ways. For public safety, ensuring that we are having fast, effective, and efficient ways of us taking care of potholes, taking care of snow removals, garbage disposals. But at the same time, too, making sure that we continue to mitigate the crime that we see here in Boston by making sure that we're having strong community police relationships, continue to foster that, but also looking at other ways to impact and address mental health as well, not always using the police when it comes to it. And then the last piece for that as well is making sure that we're living in a city where pedestrians, motorists, as well as people on bikes feel safe and comfortable sharing the roads together. So those are the things I want to be able to have in my maiden speech.
Thank you. Where do I start? Making me think into the future, but speaking into existence, right? When I think about my maiden speech, I will have a drive of my days' lived experience, drive into what it looks like for me when I first immigrated here, and what my story meant like. I was started off by focusing on universal pre-K, and really looking like in their expansive expanding, and making sure that every single three- and four-year-old has a seat in our city. Education starts with our little ones. And if we want to make sure that we are securing the future for every single student in our city, that's where we should start: universal pre-K. Second, is focusing on looking at how we are supporting other residents who need us the most, specifically those like myself and others, and focusing on low income when it comes to creating and focusing on a universal income. I had the chance of working on this project when I was the director of engagement of the Economic Mobility Lab, and really focusing on what it will look like for the City of Boston to adopt universal income. That's something that I'm very passionate about. And I will leave my maiden speech with a focus on collaboration, hope, but also how we're leading the city forward with new perspectives, new idea, but with a focus in us supporting every single person who needs us most, and how are we doing that with built-in policy that is truly going to focus in uplifting our city.
Thank you. You both support many of the progressive housing policies that the current mayor is working on, such as transfer fee on development, rent stabilization, and using city-owned land for expanding affordable housing. Please name two initiatives that the city has not already undertaken to produce more affordable housing units that you would champion. We're going to start with Marvin again.
Absolutely. So the two that I could think of right now, look, look at what's going on right now in Cambridge regarding how they've been able to change up some of their zoning process, where you're able to go ahead and start building app-right when it comes to five stories or more. I would like to take a look at that and see if that's something we could be able to incorporate at some element within the City of Boston. The reason why that's important is because at some point, as a small business owner that, that I am, developers, they're going to start looking at places in Boston where they can't build, and now they're going to start going to Cambridge. And that's an issue, because we need more housing, we need more affordable housing. So in what way, to some degree, can we be able to take, undertake some of those zoning processes that, that's been adjusted in Cambridge so we can have it here in Boston? And some of the things I would like to do is ensure that our city council, Boston City Council, is working with other city councillors as well, within Cambridge, Somerville, whatnot, so we can have this collaborative effort of saying, hey, if you're building one place, you also have to be able to support here in Boston as well. So that's one I want to be able to take a look at. I know we're looking at reforming Article 80. I want to be able to take, continue to take a harder look on that. I know that's something that the mayor's talking about, but I want to make sure that we're actually taking a harder look on focusing on Article 80 when it comes to land development. I do feel that our process is very, very lengthy. It needs to be more predictive, as well as ensuring that we are getting all the voices that we need at the table so that they know, or we as a community know exactly how to approach a specific development, right? They have, they have stayed in the whole development process, which I feel like that we are lacking when it comes to it. So those are the two things I would really like to take a look at and really approach.
I think one of the, and so currently, right now, it's a, it's a pilot program that the city currently has, but we all know that with pilot programs, they only go, it only goes so far, because they only have specific funding, and it's considered a pilot for a reason. So one of the main focuses when it comes to creating more affordable housing, but also increasing affordable homeownership in the city, I would love to make permanent a co-purchasing program for home buyers in the City of Boston. And what does that look like? It looks like for families, for generations who are living together on the one household, to be able to combine incomes and purchase their homes. This will allow grandparents, aunts, uncles, and partners to be able to combine incomes to truly look at what it is to continue to make Boston home. If we want to speak about affordable housing, then we need to be able to create policies, create programs that are going to help generational families do that, and making sure that we as a city, as your next city councillor, understand what it means to go from a pilot program to go to fully funding a program that's going to completely support the whole city. So that's one of the focuses. And then the second one is really focusing on how do we support already small landlords, mom-and-pop shop, like my mom and my dad, who purchased their homes over twenty years ago that now has turned into our generational home, and really allowing them to be able to build inside their own spaces. For my grandma, others who want to be able to think about living there, but also facilitating what those permits look like. We all know what it looks like to go into ten, ten Mass Ave and even apply for a short form, or even what it looks like to replace your fence. We know how hard that looks like, and we know how hard it is for people who don't understand, and the language is also a barrier. So what it will look like to really look into those processes, make it easier, make it more understandable, and make it in a way where it's people-friendly, where language, culture is not an issue for anyone to be able to build, and also just continue to create family in Boston, even if it's in their backyard. Thank you.
All right. Next question is about legislative strategy. The city has or has had several home rule petitions of legislature on range choice voting, rent stabilization, taxation, transfer fees. What do you think the city council could do differently to ensure passage of these home rule petitions by the state legislators? And what home rule petitions do you envision filing if elected? And once again, we're going with Marvin first.
Yeah, this is a great question. I mean, look, as I said before, I'm going to continue to say this again, rent stabilization is something that's very important for me, and I would love to be able to, you know, once elected, ensuring that we could continue to push that as hard as we can when it comes to the state legislators, right? As a kid that grew up in Brooklyn, who lived under rent control, I understand how important it is to have stability, right? So I would want to focus on that, making sure that there is a different course of action, pushing it harder, making sure that we're working with our state legislators, making sure that we're continuing to, to generate, find common ground with our state legislators so we can move this forward. This is something that shouldn't have been passed a long time ago. There are a lot of people who are struggling now, and they're not getting the support that they need. So I would love to find ways differently to push this, maybe through building stronger coalitions with the state legislators, making sure that we're working with a lot of our nonprofits. Shout out to those who went to the rent control rally last week, I was there as well. I'd love to see more of that. So I would love to be able to, to move that differently and more aggressively if needed to. Home rule petitions that are visioned filing if elected, this might be a little bit controversial, but this is also me thinking out of the box on how do we generate more revenue, especially how we're seeing what's going on at the federal level, and how, you know, unfortunately, the federal administration's holding our funding ransom. I would love to see what does municipal tax looks like to some degree, right? I know New York City, that's something that they're doing. That is a way to generate more revenue, but that is one thing that I would like to be able to, to at least discover and see if that's something that could be meaningful or supportive here in Boston.
Thank you for that. I'm going to go back to the question.
What do you think the city council could do differently to ensure home rule petitions are passed by the state legislature, and what home rule petitions do you envision filing if elected?
Thank you. I think one of the biggest things to focus on is how are we collaborating with our state legislature, and what does that look like right now? What, how are current councillors and the current layup being able to do that? Whether if it's being able to pick up the phone and call one of our state and look into how are we working together to create that? If one of the focus that I had to say, if I were to think about a home rule petition, it will also look like into what it would be to support a charge on a small fee on a high-end luxury. We're talking about buildings that are being built, one, two million dollars. How are we doing that in our city and making that small percentage be put into building more affordable housing? And how are we doing that electively? Where we are supporting and using that money to be able to support those who need to be able to stay in our city. As, as, as much as we want to talk about affordable housing, as much as we want to talk about creating that, how are we using, and how are we looking at those who get permits to be able to build these luxury condos in our city and spend over two to three million dollars, but making sure that they're paying their fair share and using that funding to create more affordable funding will be one of the most home rule petitions that I will look forward to.
Marvin, this question is just for you.
I love that.
Your first sentence in the questionnaire under community engagement was engaging all residents, not just the well-connected. Is it your opinion that the current at-large councillor is only engaged the well-connected?
Uh, no, that's a negative. What I meant by that was if you, so I used to volunteer and be part of the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. And I've noticed in other neighborhood associations and neighborhood councils, unfortunately, you usually see the same usual suspects, the well-connected, people who have time to actually voice their concerns and opinions. And JPNC, they saw this, and they tried, they, they did their, their darnedest effort to ensure that we were getting people of color, not just owners, also tenants to be part of the conversation, right? Because that was important. We had to make sure that we were reflecting our community, that we're trying to support when, when it comes to JPNC. So I want to clarify that. I wasn't saying that at-large is only connecting with the well-connected. I was talking more about the neighborhoods, the neighborhood councils, to try to ensure that we're getting people from all walks of life within the community to actually be part of the conversation. That's why it's important for me, for us to look at reformation when it comes to Article 80, because I am in support of looking at hybrid, permanent hybrid zoomings, right? Looking at different times for us to go ahead and leave. It can't always be once a month, six to eight o'clock PM, because we do have working families that's probably working multiple jobs, so we have to look at different times. And then also looking at different options for language. So that's what I meant by that, of saying, hey, let's not only focus on the well-connected, let's make sure that everyone has a seat at the table when it comes to voicing their concerns for their neighborhood and their city.
The next question is about sustainable transit. Bikes and bus lanes have emerged as a flashpoint in this election, as you know. Can you name two new strategies that you would implement to support sustainable transit in Boston? And we're going to start with Alex this time.
Thank you. This is such a hot question. I figure, okay, I'll need two minutes, fine. If there is, I think, thinking about new, one of the things that I will look into is, and I mean, we have seen it right now with the Blue Hill redesign, and also the Hyde Park redesign. I've been to a lot of meetings, and I'm a part of a lot of those conversations. And one of the things that I would like to see implemented from day one is making sure that we are acquire and adhering to the city's language access program. And I say this very, very focused because right now, you look at, when it comes to the engagement, and a lot of it is not reflective of the cultural communities that live in each of these neighborhoods. And this is where a lot of the communication is left out. This is where a lot of residents' voices are not heard. This is where you have a lot of misconceptions and a lot of lack of communication, because that's not happening. Right? The city passed an ordinance to assure that every single city department is able to translate anything that's being put out into our city into our top ten languages. Currently, that's not happening with every single department, including the BPDW and others. So number one, that's the one thing I will focus on, because when we talk about making sure that every single voice is at the table, we need to make sure that we do everything we can to make sure that that's happening. And then number two, is really focusing on how are we listening to everyone, but also thinking, and how do we get creative with bike lanes and transportation? And I know this might sound a little bit out of the box, but we need to start looking at every neighborhood differently, and looking at every single transportation plan uniquely. What happens, what the transportation plan that is planted, and let's say, for example, and also Brighton, he's Boston, West Roxbury, is very different from JP. It's very different from Roxbury, because the needs are different, and every single neighborhood is different. And we need to take a look at each plan in that specific way. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the first thing I would look at is how do we make free access for MBTA, right? I think that's really important for, for people who are trying to get to work, trying to be able to commute and transit from different places, right? One thing I would look at, and I probably should have said this for my previous questions on a home rule petition, but looking at how out-of-town developers are getting tax-free giveaways, right? Why can't we be able to leverage and use that money towards the MBTA and being able to have longer hours and access, right? I think that's going to help with a couple of things. I think that's going to help with leveraging, utilizing cars less, right? Where we can be able to use the bus and the train, and we could not worry about congestion, which is a huge factor that's involved when we're trying to look at a more sustainable future for our city. I think another thing as well, and Alex, she brought this up here, is that we need to make sure that everyone understands how we're moving forward with a lot of these different approaches and initiatives, right? So making sure that we have different language programs so people understand exactly how we're communicating these things, and how important it is when it comes to sustainability. I'd also look to push for more carbon-neutral approaches. I think that's important. I, I don't know if you've been outside lately, but it's been pretty gloomy out, and why is that, right? I think someone told me that in Canada, there's a forest fire going on. This is some serious stuff that we're dealing with, right? So we have to look at more sustainable ways. And I think, again, one way of us being able to do that is providing a more free, accessible way for us to be able to move in and out of Boston, where we're limiting our use on cars, which is super important, and we're, we're increasing our use on public transportation and on bikes, and looking at more carbon-neutral ways for us to be able to commute.
Another talking point in this, in the mayoral campaign is around White Stadium. Although the majority of Bostonians and parents of BPS students support the White Stadium project, it's another area of controversy, including in our neighborhood and in our own steering committee. You both support the project. Tell us why, and we'll start with Alex again.
Thank you. Well, as someone who dug, and I'll take this from the arts perspective, and if I have time, I'll, I'll leave that. Ever since I was sixteen years old, I've been volunteering in the Dominican Festival, the Caribbean Festival, the Puerto Rican Festival, and also Wake Up Dear. And when I look at this project, I look for a space where people are going to be able to celebrate their cultures and think about bringing it all in one space. I mean, the next weekend is the Dominican Festival, so everyone should know that it's on the seventeenth. And we look into what it is, where it is now, and its history and where it started. So being able to find a place where communities like mine, and like Marvin's, right, and like all of you who are here, to be able to really think about creating a space where we feel comfortable, and making a space where everyone is able to celebrate their cultures in there, and bringing that massive amount of people there, it's so important. But also looking at it from a small business perspective. I don't know if any of you got the chance to go to the small business conversation that happened through White Stadium. What it will look like for our local businesses, specifically our black and brown businesses, to be able to have the opportunity to have vending there? And what does that look like? And how are we supporting that? And I also look at it from the perspective, as someone who comes from a family that is very sports-oriented, from baseball, basketball, I look, I want to look like for my son, our youth, to be able to have the proud space where they can also have sports and call home. And every single child in our city should be able to have a quality space to do that. And if I look into it more, and really looking into why I support it, those are just some of the few reasons why I did it. But also just looking back from lived experience, what it looks like to be able to have a space where we can all celebrate our cultures and celebrate our small businesses, and how it brings the city all together.
As some of you probably know, I, my wife and I, we wrote an article on why we support White Stadium. And I live two blocks away from White Stadium. I'm always on Franklin Park, and, you know, we, we just saw that stadium just falling apart. But I do understand that there is a lot of history, a lot of emotional ties to White Stadium as well. You know, I do see it as a return on investment. I do see that there's a ROI when it comes to White Stadium, and what's it going to bring to the local community, whether it's in Edgerton Square, Blue Hill, and also our main streets. And I do believe that, you know, as this project continues to, to develop, we need to start talking to our main streets and ensuring that they're ready for the uptake of potential business that might be coming their way, or they might falter, right? So this is an opportunity for us to go to our businesses and, and help them thrive. And as a small business owner, that is something that's important to me. Now, I will say this, one thing I will not stand for when it comes to White Stadium is displacement, is gentrification, is changing a landmark of this neighborhood. And as a city councillor, my job is to ensure that City Hall continues to talk with the people within the neighborhood, ensuring that we have plans to make sure that our black and brown, working-class, and small businesses continue to stay there and enjoy White Stadium. I'm for, I, I love the idea of how we have Boston Family Days. We should have that for our children in White Stadium. I, I think that it would be great for us to have different types of vouchers and discounts to ensure that our local neighborhoods are being able to go in there and enjoy it. And I would love to see Boston public school students play sports in there as well. But I will not stand for having to see our whole landmark start to change because more developments come on in here, and we're pushing away good, good families because they can't afford that. That's something I'm willing to go ahead and fight.
Next question about education, and we're going general, so just what is your top priority for improving Boston public schools? And what's one policy, other than an elected school committee, from another school district? And what's one policy, other than an elected school committee, from another school district that we'd like to see implemented in Boston Public Schools? We'll start with Alex.
Thank you. Where do I start? I think I mentioned it at the beginning. One of the focuses and really looking where we are, would improve our schools, is really looking into expanding our IBAR legal program. Right now, we saw that, right? A lot of our schools actually went through the Department of Higher Education and DESI to be able to get approval. And I know some of our local schools here in JP are going to be able to offer that option, which is amazing. But what it will look like for all of our schools across the city to be able to do that? And I say that with a smile on my face, because as someone who is in charge of a department where we have a Vietnamese advisor, Haitian advisor, Caribbean, K-Verdian, Latino, I look at every single culture from that perspective. Over 43.3% of our students don't speak English as a first language, including myself. I'm an English learner. I learned English when I came here at 10 years old. I went to summer school every single year, because, quote-unquote, "my English was not good enough" to be able to pass my AMCAS scores or any of the tests to be able to go to college. So what it would look like for us to give our kids quality education, even if it's through making sure that we're creating that space? And that's something that I would truly focus on.
I'll say this. I think one of the greatest strengths of Boston Public Schools is its diversity. I think us being able to have people from all walks of life and our children gets to meet them, get to see different languages, experience different religion. I mean, if you think about it in a granular scheme of things, in the United States, not a lot of school systems have that, have that power of diversity. And that's something that we have and we need to continue to harness. Now, I will say this. Something that I see that's missing, and again, a father of three kids and two of them are in Nathan Hale, which they love the school, by the way. We love the school. It's an amazing school in Roxbury, is that we've seen a turnover of principals. I think we, my daughter went through three principals in a matter of three years or so. And this is telling, right? This is just happening in the Hale, or, you know, this is an anomaly. This is happening all across BPS, where you do have a lot of teachers, principals, people who have touchpoints with our students, who don't feel like they're being supportive, who don't have the support when it comes to this, right? So, look, we have over $1.6, $1.7 billion going to BPS. How is that being managed? How is that being worked on, right? And I want to take a look at that and make sure that that's going appropriately. But the biggest thing is I want to make sure that we're supporting our teachers, we're supporting our principals. If they need additional support to make sure that they're able to do the job and there's no interruption when it comes to our children's curriculum, that's what I'm for. I'm also looking at making sure that we are renovating a lot of our, a lot of our schools. I think that's something that we need to work on. Again, I love the schools that my daughters go to. It needs a lot of work. And there's a lot of schools like that that needs a lot of work. So we need to take a step back, prioritize, especially in a lot of the areas that need the support, on how do we best renovate those areas, make it more green and things of that, and that sort. Was I supposed to answer the second question or no? Okay. I think another thing I want to look at, oh, no, I don't have time. I've been cut off. Story of my life.
Alex, this question is just for you. In Massachusetts, the concept of funding follows a student means when a student attends a charter school, a portion of that public district funding is transferred to the charter school, which takes critically needed funding away from BPS. In the progressive mass questionnaire, you answered that you did not oppose the expansion of charter schools in Boston. Please explain why you support the expansion of charter schools?
Yeah, thank you for that question and the clarification. And I'll be very direct in a sense. I support in district, not for-profit schools who are making money to not be able to fit our kids in our community. I was able to attend City and Hill Charter School, which closed a couple weeks ago, months ago, weeks ago. This seems like a long time. And I say this, but I also went to the Blackstone. I also went to the Luenberg. I also went to the Edwards. And I was lucky enough to be able to attend so many amazing schools. And in that end, what it would look like to make sure that all of our communities, especially our black or brown communities, to look into having the opportunity to focus in district schools? So I just want to make sure that I clarify that in the sense of not supporting for-profit charter schools, but really focusing in our in-district and how are we supporting our families, specifically our families of color, to be able to have options and be able to work that? But also looking into perspective, how are we working together? Right now, if I'm, please someone correct me if I'm wrong, we, under BTU, we have over four or five schools that are working with our teachers' union. And that's something that I am very much focused on and focused on. How are we making sure that all of our schools, all of our teachers, have the space where they feel safe, are getting paid equitably, and they have fair bargaining to be able to speak up for themselves but also create and work with our students? So thank you so much for, now, creating that question, and I hope that addressed some of the confusion.
Next question is about pilot. So for years, many of Boston's large nonprofit institutions have fallen short on pilot pavements. We fought hard for not only improved funding, but also a clear definition of community benefits and community oversight. Right now, many colleges, universities, and hospitals are facing major federal funding cuts and laying off staff, and degree programs facing financial deficits. So taking all of that into consideration, how will you work to create a stronger pilot system that expands community engagement, defines community benefits, and creates a fairer system to meet the needs of residents of the city of Boston? And we'll start with Marvin.
Yeah, the pilot program that we have right now is, it's failing us. It's failing our community. It's not real, we're not able to optimize on what we have right now. Something that I would want to look at, I think we all know this, is that with the pilot program, it's really based off of the property value of those institutions, right? I think the last time that we did an assessment on those institutions were probably, was a decade ago. We did one a couple of years ago, but we haven't gotten the results. Why is that, right? We, so what I'm saying here is that we need to revitalize the pilot program, make sure that we do a fair assessment, because we have universities that are buying up more land and taking up more space, and we know that property values go up. So if we're asking them to actually give us, you know, provide community benefits and give us money, we need to base it off of current property value, and that's important. Another thing I will take a look at, I want to look at, you know, the institutions, Texas have institutions IMP, IMP's, Institute Master Plan, which focuses, which has a segment on community benefits, right? If we're going to keep these institutions feet to the fire, I'd say that, hey, you know what? Name your school, name your organization. We are asking for X amount, okay? Let's put that in the IMP plan, so that that can be published and everyone sees it. And if they fall short, short to it, the city council, City Hall, the city called about them. You said an IMP plan, this is what you're going to go ahead and provide. How can you add, based off of the new property value that we have? So I think that's huge, and that's something we need to focus on. Last week, we were over at the Arts and, the Mayoral Forum, Arts and Culture. And I was talking with a lot of great people who are artists, local artists, and they're trying to look for space, okay? I think within, something else when we look at the pilot programs, especially the IMP program, whether it's within funding or not, but being able to have those universities or whatnot have talent to use their space when it comes to it. So those are things that we really want to focus on.
Thank you. I think I'll take it just a little bit further, right? Before any of these private institutions even come into our city, they meet with our elected officials. They meet with city councillors. They meet with the BPTA board. They meet with housing boards. So why are we not, at the beginning of those conversations, the first thing we say, "If you want to invest in our city, you need to pay your fair share"? As simple as that. And if we want to continue creating the space where we are allowing institutions, we're allowing large corporations, and also, quote-unquote, not, those larger nonprofits to come into our city, those conversations need to happen on day one. They can't happen six months later when permits are in hand. We need to have those conversations right there and then. And that's the job of a city councillor, and what does it look like to really hold people accountable when they come to invest in our city? And when we really have conversations about community benefits, what does that look like? It's not just speaking about it. It's not just creating it. But we need to pass and we look into that, a really strong legislation, a home rule petition of what that looks like and how it's going to benefit our city. From what that means, creating more program, so our students are being able to go into these institutions, whereas using that money to create more affordable housing, whether it's using that funding to create more open and green spaces. But conversations need to happen at the table on day one. We shouldn't allow these large institutions to come into our city and just have these conversations without us as elected officials, without us as leaders, to have them understand the importance of speaking about and making sure that in order for you to come and want to invest in our city, you need to put our people first, our neighborhoods first, and our family first. And then we can have a conversation about you coming into our city and investing in it. Thank you.
So the next question is about equity. What steps can the council take to achieve greater diversity in the city contracting process? And we're starting with Marvin.
Yeah, that's a great question. And as a small business owner, you know, we're always looking at how do we support, you know, other small businesses, you know, whether if they're contractors, something of that nature. I want to make sure that in a bid or RFP process, we are ensuring that we are working locally. I think that's really important. So ensuring that we are looking, we're sourcing locally where we could find the MBWE professionals, that's within the city of Boston. Make sure that they're right there within our community. That should be our first step. That should be the first pick when we're looking at all this as well, too. And trying to make sure that we're hitting that goal, right? Putting our feet to the fire, saying that, hey, we're looking at 20, 30% within this project of, you know, minority business women enterprise-owned companies, to make sure that we're working and making sure. I think another thing is that the city council needs to make, ensure that they're talking to these different businesses. See exactly the support that they need. Talk to the different unions, see exactly the support that they need. How can we be able to collaborate together to ensure that we are meeting our metrics and ensure that we are supporting these different demographics? So that's exactly how I'll go about it. Making sure that we have, within our RFP bidding process, that we are hitting specific numbers when it comes to MBWE and we're working with other organizations, whether within a union, nonprofits, a subject matter of experts, that can ensure that we are getting those numbers up.
I think one of the things that a lot of people don't talk about or they don't see, that for anyone to even access these RFPs, it takes a million steps for you to be able even to find them. And that's just an issue right there. If community members, if small organizations and businesses cannot find where they are going to apply for these contracts, we have a problem. And on top of that, if they can't even understand how to maneuver the website, that's a whole other problem. If you ever visited the website where people need to register to become City of Boston vendors and where people need to register to become and able to apply for an RFP, I couldn't even process it myself. So I can't imagine a small business owner or someone who wants to contract with the city trying to access that. So the one thing, when we're talking about diversity and talking about equity, the one thing that I will slowly focus on is how are we creating and revamping that whole system? Because if we don't allow access and really create visibility and create a system that is actually built for the people who we want to apply, then we're not really looking at equity overall. We can talk about how we want to increase engagement and think about who we want to bring in, but if the main point of that contact that those small businesses have is not up to a point where we can even access it, then it's not going to go anywhere. And then also going back to the language piece. Like, I mean, I can think of, for example, Janet Poguero in, like, Rosendale. Janet is a Latina woman who owns a multi-country business that's been in the city for over 40 years. So how do I ask and how do I teach Janet to sit down with her on the computer to fill out this application? And these are things that I get on a daily basis for people who are just trying to do that. So if there's one thing that I will do is really, we're looking into how we're revamping that specific place, because we want to increase equity when it comes to those applications and getting more people involved. We need to start from the beginning. Thank you.
This question relates to the national environment. The Trump administration has used the threat of withholding federal funding to pressure cities into complying with federal policies that may be contrary to the values of progressive governance, such as sanctuary city policies, protections for LGBTQ residents, DEI policies, or environmental regulations. So what strategies would you use to resist federal overreach while protecting critical services and funding for residents? And we'll start with Marvin.
Yeah, again, this is unfortunate with the Trump administration, you know, again, playing this game of ransom when it comes to funding, because we're not capitulating or bending a knee to this administration. I think some of the things that we need to take, first of all, we need to continue to protect LGBTQ plus community. We need to be able to protect our DEI policies and environmental policies as well, too, and other demographics, especially within an immigrant community. We need to continue to push back, but we need to make sure that we're looking at what ways can we still maintain a way of living? And I think what we need to look at, we need to start being creative about how we're going to generate more revenue. Again, we already discussed this, low-hanging fruit, that the city council could really work on is the pilot program. That's one way, revamping a pilot program, generate revenue through that. Looking at the corporate fair share. Again, we need to be able to talk with our colleagues in the State House to ensure that we're making that happen, but that's another way that we're able to go ahead and generate more revenue. And of course, that's going to be more throughout the whole Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but within that $400 million, hopefully, you know, we're going to be getting some of that money as well, too. And then again, looking at out-of-town developers, we're getting these tax giveaways and hurting a lot of displacements. We should stop doing these tax giveaways and using that money towards economic development, where it could be helping out with these critical services, right? And I would love to be able to work with a lot of businesses, small businesses, such as Ua Cafe, where it comes to doing different types of training or at least being a place for a community. And nonprofits, who's doing the work and creating an alliance that could be able to address a lot of critical services that we need to go ahead to keep moving forward? So that's exactly how I would look at approaching this and ensuring that we're being well-protected. I think the last thing I want to bring up, there was one more thing I want to bring up, is making sure that we are having coalition, not just within Boston, but also talking to some of the cities that's within our area as well.
It is unfortunate that we, in this time right now, people are even just afraid to leave their houses or even just afraid to open the door to city services. And that's something that I see every single day at work. I see people, us knocking on our door to be able to make sure that they, that they're, that they're getting running water, right? Or that they have heat. And unfortunately, we run into the space where people don't open the doors for us and that we have to find a way to let them know that this is the city of Boston and we're just here to help. And it's something that it's really taken back on how do we push a lot of programs forward. So one of the things that I would really look into is how are we really looking into every single city department's budget? Which is really important. As a department head, one of the things that we look at every single year is where money has been used throughout the year and where money has not been looked in. And as the city council, how is the city council really taking into look how much each department is using? Which it does not happen, right? There is a lot of underutilized funds that we can be putting in towards Legal Aid funds, right? We can be putting to giving the Office of Immigrant Advancement more funding to offer more free legal clinics. So people are now waiting hours to be seen just to have a conversation, whether their visa case or whether their status is going to be able to determine whether they can stay in Boston one more week or not. So we need to really look into those perspectives and really push the city council that, in the same way that we're looking at funding a lot of these offices, how are we also auditing to see where funding and where money is not being used and where we can reallocate it? But also focusing and working with other nonprofits organization, right? Focusing and looking and working more with a lot of these immigration nonprofits, like, for example, the MEATAC Coalition and others, and the Legal Aid Fund, and how are we supporting those organizations to be able to offer more services? So that's what I'll start, is really looking, looking into that funding. Thank you.
Marvin, this question is just for you. Legal or not, it is not unrealistic to assume the Trump administration would deploy the National Guard and/or other branches of the US military, including the Marines, on peaceful Boston protesters. As a member of the Marines, what would you do if you were deployed against peaceful protesters in Boston?
Ooh, million-dollar question. So I, look, I've been in the Marine Corps for 16 years. I'm a lieutenant colonel. I love the Marine Corps. I love what it's provided for me. I love that I've been able to go around the world and, you know, support our country. And I am loyal to the Constitution. But I'll tell you this right now, and I know this is a record- But I'll tell you this right now, and I know this is recorded, when it comes down to it, bottom line of the fact, if for some reason this comes about and they say, hey, you know what? You, Lieutenant Colonel Mathelier, we want to deploy you against peaceful, you know, against people in Boston, I'm gonna have to go ahead and take a step back and no longer be part of the reserves anymore. And I could do this, this has happened in the past before, that's what you could do in the Marine Corps. You're, you have the flexibility of saying, hey, you know what? Due to conflict of interest or due to family obligations, whatever the case may be, I just can't serve right now. When my wife was pregnant with her firstborn and work was really taking up a lot of my time, I got out the Marine Corps for about two, three years. If this was to happen, I'm definitely getting out of the Marine Corps because I'm not, I'm not here to serve under a tyrant. I'm here to make sure that I am, you know, supporting, defending the Constitution. And my priority is to the people of Boston. And if they're being attacked by our own military or, you know, their freedoms being, you know, impeded on, you know, by military forces and I'm part of it, no. I prefer to go ahead and take a step back and use 100% of my capacity as a city council at large to go ahead and support during this crisis because it will be a crisis. And I need to be in city hall to go ahead and move this forward.
So this question is for Alex regarding civil liberties and the Boston Regional Intelligence Center. So you've indicated that you do not support shuttering the Boston Police Gang Database or Boston's engagement in the BRIC. We know that there are people listed in the gang database who are not actually gang members and that the BRIC shares intelligence information with federal law enforcement. So can you explain your support for both the gang database and the BRIC?
Yeah, no, thank you for that, and I'll make a quick clarification when it comes to that question. First and foremost, we should be looking at, when it comes to engagement with public safety, as creating trust. Not creating scared tactics. Not supporting and really looking into how people feel scared. Or just because of the way that they dress, or the way that we speak, or the way that we look, that we should feel a certain way. So one of the things that I would really focus on is really doing a full review of who is in there right now? Who has access? What is being shared, what is not being shared? And really looking into it, how are we really creating a space where we are supporting our Black and Brown communities to not feel like they cannot trust our police? And that's when the fun of it. And if that doesn't happen, then we shut it down. Because at the end of the day, our job is to be able to make sure that every single City of Boston resident feels safe. Feel like they can walk in our neighborhoods without feeling like I am gonna be stopped, like I'm gonna be judged, or like I'm just gonna be questioned just because of the way that I look, the way that I speak, or the way that I am dressed. So I just wanted to make sure that that is very much addressed and that we really need to look into doing a full audit and conversation in who's there right now? What is being used for? And how are we making sure that it's not being proportionally issued when it comes to our Black and Brown resident in our city? Because we can't continue to create more scare tactics where people don't feel safe to even have a conversation with our police department or pretty yet anyone in a uniform. I want to be able to make sure that Adonis goes out, Adonis my son's name. Then Adonis goes out and he doesn't feel scared. So that's one of the things that's really looked into, is how are we doing a full audit and looking into it? And not focusing, and not, then we shut completely down.
Thank you. I'm gonna skip the budgeting question because you both already answered about what happened and then go on to youth jobs. The future of Durophosity depends on robust youth engagement. Describe how you plan to engage youth formally in your work as city councillors. And we're starting with Marvin.
I think there are two ways that I would like to do this. One is through the participatory budget. I think that's really important. First of all, I think that we need to increase our participatory budget from $2 million to $40 million. I think that that's gonna give us more space for us to be, to have more of an impactful initiative from our residents in Boston. And that could also create a more robust relationship, hopefully, with the city as well, our residents. And our youths play a major role in that. I think that just recently, they were able to pass, correct me if I'm wrong here, a youth rental assistance program, right, through the participatory budget. We need to continue to do that, that's awesome, right? I think another thing, but again, we need to be able to grow that and have more of a robust participatory budget moving forward. Another thing I want to look into is, we have these amazing summer youth programs, internship programs. That's great, that's dandy, I want this to be a year long, right? Me being a cafe owner at Ola Cafe, me being the former executive director of a Haitian Culture Center, I've had, you know, young workers or interns come in, especially right now in the Culture Center, where they're learning a lot, they're able to go ahead and engage with us and they're starting to build their resume and they're starting to create soft skills and working dynamics. And I could learn a lot from them and they could learn a lot from me. I think that's something that's important, but I would like to have this year long. We could be able to learn a lot from our youths and what's going on and how to best support them. And on top of that, that'll get them, keep them out of trouble, right? So us being able to have that, that helps them out with their mental health, their physical health, and that gives them a step up when it comes to their resume. So those two things are something that I really want to be able to push.
I love this question. One of my first jobs when I was here is through the youth summer jobs, and I worked at a daycare. And that was the best job I had as a 16-year-old. I was so happy walking into the daycare every day. My mom is smiling because that was, I think that was one of the first things that I told her. And luckily, my mom owns a daycare, but I didn't work at her daycare, I worked at someone else's daycare. But to say the least, I think one of the focuses, I was a summer search student and a bottom-line student as well. And one of the things that I really loved is being able to be a part of programs like Upper Bound. And being, and as an inner-city kid, what it looked like for my family who couldn't afford to pay out of pocket for me to be able to go into those programs. So if I were to look into how we're engaging more the youth, it's really creating more rich opportunities for us to be able to be in those spaces, especially for families who cannot afford it. So what it will look like for the city to create a fund to help those families and help those youth engage in that? And then number two, really focusing on how we're engaging better with the trades and focusing on more, when it comes to Madison Park. We were just at the Labor Council cookout. And I had a conversation with a 19-year-old who is now part of the elect local 103. 19 years old. And how amazing it is for that 19-year-old to sit here, and he was so excited, he was smiling so much of how happy he was that he was able to get through the apprenticeship. So really looking into how are we creating better pathways for our youth to create and have better opportunities to get into these amazing spaces, but also look into as well our technical support and our vocational support to make sure that we are creating, allowing spaces for our youths to be able to experience all around. And also focusing on how we're making sure that is equitable across the globe. So every single family, regardless of income or regardless of zip code of where they live, are able to access these programs. Thank you.
Okay, so now we do have time for a couple of audience questions. And we're, this is gonna be, how quick you think on your feet? Because you're only gonna get one minute to answer them?
I love these.
We have a lot. Just like, roughly the order that's given, we're already discussed.
My glasses are on here.
Sure. One minute.
It'll take me one minute to read this. Arguably, councillors Murphy, Mejia, and Luigi are likely to be re-elected, leaving one seat up for grabs. Frank Baker is well-positioned to take that slot because of his base as a former district councillor. And he has four times more money than his challengers, you both and Henry Santana. What is your path to victory to beat Frank Baker for the fourth seat?
So I've been knocking on doors all over the place, South Boston, Charles Town, West Roxbury, Hyde Park. I just got done with Reedville, I'm in Dorchester. So my thing is, I'm going through grassroots and I'm seeing the benefit of that. People are hearing about me, they're saying, hey, have you heard about this guy named Marvin? He just came and knocked on my door and this is amazing. And word is spreading because of that. Obviously, I'm doing these forums and that's been helpful as well. But I have a dedicated team, a great full-time campaign manager, three political consultants who are keeping me knocking on doors. My goal is to hit at least 500 doors per week in different areas. And at the same time, I have my volunteers that's doing about 300, 400 a week. So we're hitting this grassroots because we have to. We have to get our name out there, we gotta get our message out there. And the best way we could do that is by going out there and meeting people where they live. So that's what I'm focused on, I'm continuing to do that because we are seeing momentum as we move forward.
I think one of the best things for me is meeting people where they are and really understanding that when we talk about grassroots level, we're gonna talk about it from all perspectives. From the $25 donation that I get from the bodega owner, from the $10 donation that I get from the person that I meet because I knocked on their door while they were in traffic light, right? I think that's what grassroots looks like. It looks like to me to stalk into residence as I'm running to catch a train and trying to make it to work. And that's the amount of work, what it sounds like to engage. I think one of the best things that we can do to really take a look and making sure that we're meeting Frank Baker in that end is that collectively as a community, we all must come together to do that together. Whether if it's coming together and having conversations like this, and whether if it's coming together to help us knock on doors, and whether if it's also having conversations with everyone from all perspectives, from knocking on doors to meeting people where they are to hosting coffee hours like I've been doing in every single neighborhood since December. So this is what grassroots looks like and this is something that we're really looking into to keep the needle forward.
Okay, here's an easy one, and you don't need a whole minute. What committees would you want to serve on? And we'll start with Marvin because I was just spoke.
Looking at ways and means and also military veteran services, I think those are the two that's near due to have it.
Things clear, education. Education and governance. As someone who really truly loves education and really vision and champions the importance of quality education for every single one of our kiddos, that's a committee that I would love to chair. And also governance, right? That's an everyday thing that we do. So making sure that we are city councillors and also for our residents are able to see someone who truly understands what those two topic areas are in the city council with experience and knowledge is something that I'm very passionate about and I really look forward to be able to chair them.
With cuts in Medicare and Medicaid and health insurance, with cuts in Medicare and Medicaid and health insurance becoming prohibitively expensive, would you support and speak out for the MHA, which I assume means Massachusetts Health Care For All bill at the State House? I'll go for Alex first.
Healthcare should be a right for every single person. And if that means coming out and speaking out so every single person has the ability to get healthcare, then absolutely. As someone, I grew up with very severe asthma. I couldn't imagine what it would look like for me not to have access to my emergency inhaler because a lot of the times I need them. I can't, I can't look what it looks like for my grandma not to be able to get her medicine or for the vet or for the elderly, what it looks like for not to be able to. So absolutely yes, and making sure that we are advocating so every single person has access to free, affordable healthcare. Because healthcare is a right and we must do whatever it takes as possible to make sure that every single person in our city is able to access quality healthcare.
I've had family that died because they didn't have money to pay for their health expenses. I'm gonna keep it together. And it's been tough and it's been difficult. Be, having to see them go through that and us trying to, you know, put things together so we can be able to best support them and unfortunately, it just didn't work out because we just didn't have the means for it, right? So yes, absolutely, I'll step on out and support this time over time, time again, because this is important. We should be able to have this, people should be able to have access to healthcare. People should be able to go to the doctor, get checked up. If it's something that's significant, they should be able to have the means to pay for it and this is why this is important. So I'm absolutely for this. This is something that hurts near and dear to me and I don't want people going through this. And there are people out there who's been through this, right? Who's lost family members because they just didn't have a way forward, the resources for it. I don't want anybody else to have to suffer.
This is just gonna be a quick yes or no. Would you support cooperative businesses as part of the criteria for city contract awards?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Would you support cooperative businesses as part of the criteria for city contract awards?
Co-op.
Co-op.
Yep. Co-ops.
Support co-ops, yes, I would support co-ops.
That's two yeses? Well, and, we're getting, this is gonna be a two-part question and then a yes or no on both of them. To help families stay in their homes, would you, A, fight to increase funds for the city's acquisition opportunity program so nonprofits and land trusts can take homes off the market?
Yes.
Fight to increase funds for the City of Boston's housing voucher program?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now we're gonna end with a closing question. Not a statement, just a question.
I'm gonna get my two minutes back. No, I'm stoked.
No? You don't want it. What is the Boston Globe headline you'd hope for at the end of your first term should you get elected? Don't use anything from today's Globe headline.
Boston City Council at Large, Marvin Mathelier, huge advocate of housing affordability, rent stabilization, and Boston Public, this is very long. I remember, I remember the mayor did this last time, it was super long. Marvin Mathelier, candidate for, you know, at-large, health champion, rent stabilization, and along with support with corporate fair share.
Not what I want.
Well, you said, you said at the end of your first term, at the end of your first term.
Are we doing every first term?
Are we doing every first term or when we win?
No, every first term.
Okay, so we're talking about what we've accomplished.
Right.
Okay.
Headline.
Headline. Okay, great. So councillor Valdez is able to secure funding so every single junior, four-year-old in the City of Boston has a universal pre-K seat.
I want to thank you both very much for coming and participating. You had one minute. And then as you're leaving, if you are able, if you could bring your chair with you to the front, that would be great if it were around the corner, that helps us all get home on time.
Thank you.
And thank you so much. And those of you that are members of JP Progressives, you will be, the steering committee will be meeting soon and coming up with who we're gonna recommend for our endorsement and then it's up to the JP Progressive members to actually vote. And you have to get 60% or more of the vote to get our endorsement. Thank you.